All right, would the meeting come to order, please? This is the, good evening, everyone. My name is Ronald Tropoli. I'm the attorney for the board. This is the 7:30 PM reorganization meeting, regular meeting. And we will commence with the opening statement.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 11th, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 11th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 11th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
The next order of business is to swear in the new members. We have Mr. Herbert Massa, who's a new member, Mr. Jose Orozco, who is moving up, and Paul Seiya. First, we'll start with Mr. Massa and Mr. Orozco. If you would kindly join me in the well and I'll administer the oath of office.
I state your name.
I, Herbert Massa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office of zoning board of adjustment.
Of the office of zoning board of adjustment.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much.
The records should reflect that Mr. Massa and Mr. Orozco have been sworn and I'll hand these to our administrative secretary for execution. And when you're finished there, please join the balance of the members. This is your side.
Yes, sir.
At the center. First of all, it's a pleasure to have you back, sir, after so many years. We look forward to having you. Sir, raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Paul Seiya.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
In this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God. I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of zoning board of adjustment.
Of the office of the zoning board of adjustment.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir. And you are alternate one.
Yes, I am.
To your turn.
You got it.
And I will hand this to our administrative secretary to sign. And when you're finished, please take your place to the panel of the board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tropoli.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
We're good.
Moving right along, may we have a roll call, please? Eileen.
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Massa.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Orozco.
Here.
Mr. San Clemente.
Here.
Mr. Seiya.
Here.
Mr. Moretti.
Here.
Chairman Nansen.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everyone join me, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone may have a seat. This is the reorganization part of the meeting where the membership will decide on various positions. First on the list would be nominations for chair. Do we have a nomination for chairman of the zoning board?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Wendell Nansen as chairman.
Is there a second to that nomination?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations on the floor? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, again, congratulations. I'll turn the meeting back to you now. Thank you.
Thank you, board members, for your full confidence. I will do my best to believe with the best of my abilities. And thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to take motion to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Yes, and I have to read the. I'll read the statement first, then I'll take the roll call, okay? Executive Session Resolution. Whereas Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 13 of the New Jersey Revised Statutes requires that the public shall not be excluded from any meetings of a public body unless a resolution authorizing such exclusion is adopted at a public meeting. And whereas the zoning board of adjustment of the township of Howell has determined that such a closed meeting is required to discuss certain matters which are exempted from consideration with the public in attendance under New Jersey Revised Statutes 10:4-12, namely personnel. Now therefore be resolved by the zoning board of adjustment of the township of Howell that the public shall be excluded from the next portion of this meeting and that the zoning board of adjustment will reconvene in public session thereafter. Be it further resolved that minutes will be kept of the meeting in closed session and the time and circumstances under which the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public cannot be determined at this time. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
The board will now reconvene to executive. We will be back shortly. The zoning board will now reconvene.
I'm just in charge. I'd take a nomination.
That's not on.
This time, I'll take a nomination for vice chair.
I'd nominate Mr. San Clemente.
Okay, got a nomination by Mr. Hughes, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
Okay, this time, take for board secretary.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Merton.
Nomination by Mr. Moretti.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes, absolutely.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, consulting attorney.
I want to nominate Mr. Ron Tropoli.
Okay, nomination by Mr. Orozco.
I second that.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Absolutely. It's been many years, Mr. Tropoli.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, you humbled me by appointing me, and I appreciate that. This actually will, I'll begin my 21st year here, which in Howell Township is, as we all know, quite a record. But I look forward to serving you. I'm pleased with the work you've done, and again, I can only offer my sincere thanks to all of you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, consultant engineer.
I'd like to nominate T and M, Charlie Cunliffe and Jack Mallon.
Okay, have a nomination by Mr. O'Donnell.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Mertens. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
First of all, before I answer that, I want to welcome Charlie aboard. I know last year was your first year, technically, but Mr. Mallon, it's been a wonderful pleasure having you mentor me for the many years I've been here. You've taught me a lot, and I know Charlie is just sitting there, just soaking it up, you know, just, just, I can't go back, you know, asking 30 years back date what happened. Mr. Mallon is a wealth of information, and I want to very much say yes and welcome back and, you know, I know you're not going to be here every meeting, but, you know, thank you for your time served here and, you know, the time you are still going to serve. And welcome aboard, Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to echo your comments as well and say thank you. You know, Jack, I think he's been serving the board 30-plus years, and I hope to even, you know, hit half of that would be an accomplishment. So, thank you for having me, and I look forward to serving you this year.
Thank you.
And I thank you, and it's interesting, you know, those are your two new members I probably worked with many, many years ago, Paul, of course, and Mr. Massa, if I'm correct, the board of education, right?
Right. I know you for many years.
I remember the names. It's interesting how what goes around comes back.
Yes.
Or happens.
Rust again.
I know Paul very well. Curb, I know we didn't work a lot together, but I welcome you. Congratulations on your appointment.
Very nicely, very good work.
Well, see, Paul and I started the same year.
Right.
We were appointed together on the board, and it's wonderful to have him back, too, so.
A lot of people don't know he started here, then went to planning board.
Yeah, I know.
And back. So, I know that.
Thanks, Jack.
Chairman, before you go further, could you just put your actual vote on the record?
I said yes.
Thank you. Okay, I missed it, I'm sorry.
Absolutely, yes. We're going to skip the next one. That's a no, that's a no-brainer. Sergeant, a planner.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer from Leo Beacon.
Okay, have a nomination by Mr. Orozco.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Merton.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Again, it's been a very big pleasure serving with you. You've taught me a lot, you've helped me a lot, and you helped this board a lot. Most of all, you helped the township. I can't stress that enough, and it's a pleasure to have you back. We thought we lost you there for a while, but, you know, it's a pleasure to have you back, so definitely, yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate the confidence and look forward to another great year.
Thank you. Certified tree expert.
I'd like to nominate CME, Sherri Spiro.
Got a nomination by Mr. O'Donnell.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Seiya. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Merton.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Again, I want to thank you. You've been on the board for quite a few years, you're very knowledgeable, and you definitely steer the board in the right direction.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So my vote is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Well, these other two are irreplaceable. Administrative officer.
I'd like to nominate Eileen Rubano.
Have a motion by Mr. Hughes.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Again, Eileen, you fill some very big shoes. I have no idea how you do it, but you get it done.
I have a lot of help from the board members and the professionals, so.
Well.
And I do enjoy it, so, it helps.
Well, welcome back, and thank you very much for all you do do.
Thank you.
My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Recording secretary.
I'd like to nominate Eileen Rubano.
Motion by Mr. Moretti, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Again, welcome back. My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Before we move to the next item here, I just want to, we have a council member present in the audience, Ms. O'Donnell. I want to thank the council, most of all, you know, for the appointments of this board. Not only that, I, we have a person over here that really doesn't get a lot of credibility or acknowledgement of being sitting over here, and that's Matt Howard. I thank y'all, it took many, many years of y'all, us pleading at the board to have code enforcement or land use officer sitting over here advising the board. I have to thank y'all. It makes our job, it makes our professionals' jobs, a lot easier because we can ask him the direction of the township, you know, what, what the township is looking on these applications. Not only that, I want to thank Matt for all he has done with the board and the board members answering our questions, you know, and, you know, it's been a real pleasure having him on that sideboard, and I hope that never changes. I really do, and I want to thank you for everything that you do for us, too.
Thank you, I look forward to the next year. Looking at our schedule, I think I've doubled our caseload for this couple of weeks.
Thanks, Matt.
13 meetings in a row scheduled, so sorry in advance for that, but I'll try and tone it down next year, maybe.
But I want to thank Ms. O'Donnell for that, you know, it took counsel to do that, so. Okay, 2019 meeting dates resolution, we had discussed that in executive session. Eileen, you are going to get back with the dates that we had discussed.
I'm going to send them out to the board members tomorrow, but we just need to.
We can go ahead and memorialize.
Memorialize the resolution and all amended to the dates we decided.
Okay. Everybody on the board understand that, what we're doing with that? Okay, can I have a motion for the 2019 meeting dates?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hughes.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. San Clemente. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the official newspaper is going to be done by the council.
And they are the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News.
Okay.
That's what the council has already approved.
Okay. Okay, site review committee, chairman, Mr. O'Donnell. A regular member, Mr. Hughes and Mr. Seiya are going to be on the site review committee. And as far as the rules committee, it's our chair, vice chair and secretary. Okay, is there any other reorganization that needs to be completed, Mr. Tropoli? Okay, well, welcome aboard, everybody, and look forward to having a great year. Try to get through some of these applications if we can. Okay, approval of minutes.
There's no minutes to approve this evening.
Thank you, vouchers.
No vouchers this evening?
Correspondence.
I do have some correspondence.
Okay.
I have a letter from Salvatore Alfieri. He is the attorney for Euro Supply LTD, doing business as Stone Quest LLC. They are on tonight's regular agenda. He, his firm represents the applicant, and they are not prepared to proceed tonight. He has requested that they be carried to the February 25th, 2019 agenda, and they will undertake to notice in advance of February 25th. He's also granted the board an extension of time in which to act through March 31st, 2019.
Okay, so, Mr. Tropoli, we really don't need to read this, right?
No, but I would ask if anyone's here.
Okay. Is anyone here for case number BA 1827, Euro Supply LTD? Seeing none. This case is moved to February 25th with new notice, or notice.
With notice, yes. And I also have a letter from Alan Kaplan. He is the attorney for Robert and Dolores Kowalski, who is also on tonight's agenda, and they actually asked for an adjournment from tonight to allow sufficient time to make changes to the plans in accordance with the terms that were agreed upon with the objector, Mr. Klaps. It shall further confirm that the hearing is carried to the new date without necessity of re-noticing property owners. He's asked that he be carried to Monday, March 11th, 2019, at 7:30, and make an announcement for same at tonight's meeting. He has also granted the board an extension of time through the end of March 2019.
Okay, so that's no further notice?
Yes.
Okay, is anyone in the audience for case number BA 18-02, Robert and Dolores Kowalski? Seeing none. This case is going to be moved to March 11th, 7:30, with no further notice. Also, Eileen.
Yes.
Are our professionals aware of the changes being made?
Actually, their new plans have come in and were sent out to the professionals for review, but they weren't in in time for tonight anyway.
Okay.
So, and I did advise Mr. Cuchero, who is the conflict attorney, and he's okay with the date of March 11th.
Okay. Okay, so, Charles, y'all, y'all should be receiving those, those plans on there.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on it. As soon as we get that, we'll get the review started and get some comments back to the board.
Okay. Okay, any further correspondence?
No, that's all correspondence I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Tropoli, you might swear in to the professionals, please. Thank you. Okay, resolutions, case number BA 1824, Carl Kaye and Deborah Gegenbach. Resolution granting a certificate of nonconformity eligible voters, Armaud Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. San Clemente.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. And at this time, I want to take a 10-minute break real quick. Zoning board is going to break, and we'll be back at 8:25.
The zoning board will now recess. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Okay, applications before the board. First application up is case number BA 1829, Patrick McDaniel, cert, certificate of nonconformity. Application of Patrick McDaniel as applicant-owner seeking a certificate of nonconformity to legitimize existing garage on his property known as Block 2.04, Lot 2, 18 Sunset Drive. Expiration date, February 28th, 2019. Welcome.
Thank you. For the record, Harvey, O'York, Novans, York and Jacobus, and I represent the applicant. I heard your kind words about Jack Mallon. I just want the record to be clear that I know him when he was young and I was young. And he is a good engineer, and he's old school.
Yes, sir.
And that says, the only problem I have with Jack, and I'll put on the record, is ties.
If you would rather, you can sit, because there are microphones at the table.
No, I'll stand.
Okay.
At my age, standing is easier than sitting.
Mine too.
Do you have any witnesses?
Yes, I'm going to have Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Troply, you might swear any man?
My name's Pat McDaniel.
There's a microphone right in the middle of that table.
Very briefly, in terms of an opening statement, this is a house that was built in 1993. We will present evidence showing that the house was built. Mr. McDaniel will testify that he did get permits. And for reasons that will never be clear to anyone, none of the permits exist, but the house is there. We'll have six or seven exhibits, all of which substantiate the construction of the house back in 1993. The zoning ordinance obviously has changed since then, so this is a pre-existing, non-conforming structure, although it is a conforming use. At this time, I have some questions for Mr. McDaniel.
No, just sit down and speak into the table.
Okay.
Mr. McDaniel, how long have you owned?
Mr. York, can we just clarify for the board? What structure are you talking about?
The garage.
The garage, okay, because you said house a couple times.
I'm sorry. Well, you get old.
Detached garage.
You obviously are younger than I am. Mr. McDaniel, how long have you owned the property, in question?
Forty years.
And so that makes it, you purchased this what year?
1979.
And you've lived there and owned it since that time, is that correct?
Correct.
Did there come a point in time when you wanted to build a garage, a detached garage, to the rear of the property?
Yes.
And did you come to Town Hall and seek the appropriate permits?
Yes, I did.
And you don't have copies of those permits, do you?
I don't have copies. We moved out of state and I had 40 years of paperwork. I'm sure you all are familiar with that kind of stuff and I burned everything.
You did have a copy, however, of a receipt from the Township of Powell dated 12/10/93 with your lot and block on it, and it says remarks Garage. Is that correct?
Yes.
Asked this BA-1. I've pre-marked these. I don't know if you want to mark them again?
Yeah, Mr. Mertens.
I do have that.
Okay, so I'll re-mark all of them. Or you want to re-mark them?
Mr. Mertens is coming down to visit you.
You want to stay down here? I have about seven exhibits.
Yeah, why don't we mark them all?
So, A5, this will be A5 instead of A1. The receipt from the township.
Stay, just stay there, Mr. Mertens.
A6, and it's a copy of the architectural sketch. A7 is a land use certificate.
Is this an R3 zoning?
What's that?
Is this R3 zoning?
It is now.
The next exhibit is a survey dated 1/29/93. You step the chain, Mike. Next is a copy of the assessor's records. Next is a certificate of approval from the construction office. Next is a survey dated 2/3/11. And A12 is a picture of the garage.
Without a permit. What was it back then? It's always been a 10-foot standoff on 100 by 150. Oh, okay. Got it. It's not a shack.
Now, the garage in question was built and you have this receipt, is that correct?
Yes.
And the receipt indicates that it was for a garage.
Eileen, can we pass it down? Please.
The next exhibit is a short form land use certificate. After you built the garage, did you do subsequent work on the house?
Yes.
And did you get permits?
Yes.
And what was the work that was done that generated this specific permit in 2003?
I believe that was a sunroof.
So you went to the town, you asked for a land use certificate, and this was issued?
Yes.
And the garage was in place?
Yes.
There is a sketch of the garage, is that correct?
Yes.
Where'd you get this sketch?
I drew that sketch.
And where did you locate this when you were looking for records?
That come in with the Oprah report.
So you made an Oprah request from the township and this was in their files, is that correct?
When was that Oprah report?
There was two of them done.
Okay, do you have the date?
It was all this year. No, I don't have it.
This year?
Yes, it was all this year.
2019 or 2018?
2018.
2018.
And as a result, you were able to get a copy of the sketch for the garage, is that correct?
Yes.
No, and it's not a formal, just a...
What's that?
In going through your records, you were able to find a survey of the property dated 1/29/93 or 11/29/93, is that correct?
Yes.
And that showed a survey with a handwritten sketch of the garage?
Correct.
So you're now, you should place that on the plan?
I believe it was Tom Crater. I'm not 100% sure. The engineer.
Save those documents that are coming down.
The tax assessor's record, how did you obtain that?
Today, I went to the office and asked them for a copy of it.
And it shows a detached garage, is that correct?
Yes.
So you've been assessed for it?
Yes.
How long, to the best of your knowledge, have you been assessed for this garage?
Since 1993.
Did you do construction on your house in 2014, which necessitated a certificate of approval?
I'm not sure.
Well, that's when it was issued. It was actually approved in 2014. The date on it is 10/2/14, so sometime prior to that, you did work on your house, is that correct?
Yes.
And this was a certificate of approval from that date?
Yes.
Real quick, on this land use certificate, the short form, do you have that survey drawing?
No.
That was with this?
No. The survey that's already been marked 2/3/11 shows the actual garage in place back in 2011, is that correct?
Yes.
And last is a photograph of the garage. When was it taken and by whom?
Today.
And it's an accurate portrayal of what it is?
Okay, before you move forward, could I, I don't want to assume, but in 2003, do you think this was a survey that was filed with?
We don't know. We do not know if it was, because the records that we have, other than one or two that were obtained from Oprah, were taken out of his files and they're not organized well enough for me to represent to you that that survey was attached to that permit.
Okay.
So in 1993, you built the garage, is that correct?
Yes.
And the garage at that time was built in accordance with the then applicable zoning?
Yes.
And you've used it since that time?
Yes.
Is there water available in the garage?
Yes.
Is there heat?
Yes.
Is there electric?
Yes.
Was all of this inspected and approved in 1993?
Yes.
With regard to the garage itself, what is the use of the garage? And what has been the use of the garage since 1993?
Been my workshop. I restored three pickups. I had two race cars in the early 80s and 90s. Just a workshop. Second story was a gym.
Now, when you say it was a gym, was that a gym in which people from outside came in? Or a gym for your personal use, or that of your wife?
No, my wife was diagnosed with Lyme disease and they found out that exercise helped her immensely and I turned it into a gym.
Now, when you say you turned it into a gym, there's no unusual attributes, it's merely a second floor, that is open?
Yes.
There's nothing there, there's nothing special about it?
No.
And at points in time, you used it for storage as well, is that correct?
Yes.
With regard to this structure, it's your testimony that it's been there since 1993. You obtained all of the necessary permits and built it in accordance with the town standards.
Yes.
And since that time, you went in for subsequent permits so that the township was aware that the building was there. It wasn't hidden.
Yes, correct.
In plain sight.
Correct.
And it shows on prior surveys as well.
Correct.
And to the best of your knowledge, from 1993 to this date, you've been assessed?
Yes.
Have you used it for any other purpose other than that which you testified to?
No.
And to the best of your knowledge, and you have no reason to mislead the board, it is a valid existing use?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Okay, Mr. Howard, I'm going to turn to you.
So a little bit of history on this. We were presented with this case probably about a year ago. Somebody came to the property that was interested in purchasing and they asked about the garage. They asked about the legality and whether it was safe. Now, we would never, after so many years, specify something was safe, but we absolutely wanted to look into our files and make sure that the right permits were in place so that we could represent to the person buying the property that at least permits were taken out whenever they were. We could not find anything. So we have permits from before the 90s and we have permits from after. So we looked under every combination, every digital format, paper format, wherever we could, and we found nothing. So at that point, as the zoning officer, I don't want to make a statement that I can't back up. So we informed them that we have their permits and we pretty much started this process of moving forward to try and find a way to make this legal. So what drew our attention first to the structure was the height. Normally, under an accessory structure, under the current ordinance, the height determines the setback. And the structure to the peak is, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, it's well over 20 feet, maybe close to 30 feet.
28.
28 feet. So on average, maybe 25, 23 feet. And it's much closer to the property line. So in doing the research, I looked into the previous ordinances to see when it was claimed to have been built, what the ordinances were. Specifically, in 1994, the accessory structure setbacks were not specific to the height of the structure. There was no maximum height and if your lot was greater than 10,000 square feet, this lot is 15,000 square feet, the setback was 10 feet.
Correct.
So based on the surveys presented, this structure meets those setbacks.
Okay.
The accessory structure height as a setback rule came in in 1997. So based on what we've heard today and based on the statements of the owner that the structure existed prior to 1997, the township would agree that this should be looked at on the old accessory structure setbacks. And the location does meet the zoning from that time, which would make it now pre-existing, non-conforming to those changes.
Okay. So basically, what we're here to do is just formality to make it legal?
Is to issue a certificate of nonconformity for the location of the structure. Because right now, if this came to me today without this background or if the proof was that it was built in 2000 instead, this would need a variance.
Okay.
Based on the evidence given today, I do not believe that is the case.
Okay. Mr. Charles, do you want to?
Yes, I think the applicant's attorney did a pretty good job summarizing the history of the lot and the property. I was pretty much matched on my thunder there. I was going to summarize pretty much what he already said there. But main questions that I kind of have with regards to the garage, you said it's serviced by water, sewer and heat, is that correct? Or was it just electric? Now, are those, is that a separate service from the principal structure or?
The electric is a separate service.
How about everything else?
Everything else is tied into the house.
So electric's got its own meter there?
It's got its own meter.
Okay, now, I guess one of the concerns with the board with granting a certificate of nonconformity is, you know, whether the second floor could be considered habitable space. You know, we grant him a certificate of conformity to have a garage there. He sells the lot. Someone else who then owns it thinks that they can now rent that space out as a garage apartment. Garage apartments are not permitted in the zone, which would require a use variance. I think the board should consider possibly, you know, instituting a condition prohibiting any, you know, renting or tenants or, you know, usage of the second floor as a habitable space.
We have no problem as a condition that it could be used strictly for permitted uses, not rented out.
Mr. Moretti brought up a good question and I'll ask it. I don't want to steal his thunder. When was the electric put in for that garage?
Well, JCPN L will not put power in until they get a cut-in card, which requires a final electrical inspection. The electrical inspection was, I don't know. I don't remember. Probably 94, 93, 94, somewhere that area.
So the meter has been there since 93 and 94?
Yes.
Do you have bills dating back to there?
I don't think so. Like I said, I burned everything. I contacted JCPN L and see if they had paperwork with the installation of the electric and they said, "It's too long ago. We don't have anything that far back."
Do you have at least something back in the early 2000s?
Not with me, no sir.
No, but can you get that?
I'm sure I can.
Matt, would that help you?
I mean, 2000, it's got to be before 97 to make.
Before 97, okay.
And like I said, I think a lot of the other statements have.
You're okay with what?
With what's been put in front of us, yes.
Yeah.
But it has to be on the record, so you need to.
Put it on the record, though. Matt, the question is, when the township inspector for electrical, when he goes there and inspects it, doesn't he put an approved sticker on that box with the date it was inspected?
Absolutely. Sometimes the sticker will be on the box, sometimes it'll be given to the owner and maybe in 20 years, the sticker fell off the box. It's very possible.
Normally, they're on the box.
Something that helps, yes, but.
His mind is loaded with stickers, that's what I'm saying. All right. I was just wondering if you had that sticker on the box showing that.
You can see where it was, you know, there's glue there, but the sticker's not there anymore.
Okay, Matt's already said that he's heard enough as far as the past surveys. We're good at that point. And then knowing that there's not a variance needed, you know, that's the other point. Ms. Beam?
I have nothing.
You have nothing?
Nothing.
Gosh, this is a moment. Okay, board members, y'all have any questions?
For the second floor, is that fully finished to allow the equipment?
It's just got a rug in there and she had her gym equipment and that was it.
And that's in use today? Is that in use today, the gym equipment?
I don't, I don't live, you know, the house is empty.
Is this up for sale, this property?
Yes.
Just so the record's clear, what brought this to a point is, it was for sale. He had a potential buyer. The buyer did due diligence, went to the town and said, "What's the story on this house?" The buyer did the right job. Fortunately, the answer didn't help my client and that buyer has long disappeared.
That's all, thank you.
Mr. Sayah, you have any questions?
In 1993, you filed, you built the structure in accordance with the current zoning laws at that time, 10-foot standoff off a 15,000 square foot lot.
Correct.
Was your intention just to have it as a garage or did you?
Yes.
Or did you have further intentions to go ahead and turn it into a workout gym and so forth?
Well, no. The upstairs was storage, okay? When my wife got sick, she needed a gym, so I put a carpet in. She moved her equipment up there and she had a gym.
And the electrical came prior to that?
Yes, everything was there prior to that.
The heating, you put?
Heating, everything was there. Everything was inspected.
I'm good. Thank you.
I mean, everything I've done in that house has been inspected. Heaters, wood stoves, everything was inspected.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Chairman, last piece that I just want to put on the record. There were two reports issued for it, one from the Environmental Commission. They said they had no comment. And then Monmouth County Board of Health also reviewed it. They said a new septic system was installed in 2018, but they had no objection to the application either.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Okay. Any other from the professionals? Okay, can I have a motion to open the public?
Motion to open the public.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Moretti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there anyone in the public wish to come forward and ask a question or make a comment? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. Moretti.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Would you wish to give a summation?
The summation is you've heard the testimony. There's nothing further I have to offer.
Okay.
I think you, we put on a pretty good case.
Okay. Any further from the professionals? Any further from the board?
No, sir.
Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to grant a certificate of nonconformity to legitimize the existing garage on this property known as 18 Sunset Drive. Based on all the evidence that I heard.
And testimony?
And testimony.
And just so I'm clear as the draftsman, Mr. O'Donnell, are you also indicating that the use of the garage is limited to the uses placed on the record and it's not to be habitable space on the second floor? In other words, for rental or anything? And by habitable, I mean like a residential second apartment?
Well, to my knowledge, if it was, that it would be a violation. So I'm saying you need to do that.
Right, there's a stipulation, I believe, on the record.
We'll stipulate it. This is sort of like stipulated.
You could put that stipulation in and you're not going to do it.
Okay, so that'll be incorporated?
So, that'll be incorporated, then?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, you have a motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Merton. Any further findings of that?
No.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Oroscow?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next case on the agenda, case number BA18-32. Pardon my screw-up on this name, Peter Kowalklo?
Kowalklo.
Ko- Koalinko. Hopefully, I got it right. Certificate of non-conformity, application of Peter.
Kowalklo.
Kowalko, got it. As applicant, PK Industries, Inc., as owner seeking certificate of non-conformity to continue to operate manufacturing facility on premises known as 219, Lot 1901, 452 Squankam Yellowbrook Road. Expiration date, March 20th, 2019. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Michael Paxton, on behalf of the applicant, Peter Kowalko, um, also PK Industries Incorporated, that's the official owner of the property.
Okay.
Um, I got my exhibit list, uh, that Ms. Rivano, um, provided me, we do have additional exhibits, do you want me to have them marked now?
Yes, sir, we'll go ahead and mark everything right now. Uh, you wanna swear in your witness?
Yes, we'll take care of that. So, you can remain sitting. You swear the testimony, you're the same thing you used to do for the whole truth and nothing else?
Yes, I do.
Can you state your name?
Peter Kowalko.
Okay, counsel, you have the exhibit list, um, how many exhibits, sir, do you have?
I will have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
A4 is the deed to the property?
You want me to write it and you can initial it?
Sure. A4? Yes, it's A4.
A5 is an invoice from PK Properties dated April 20, 1992.
Excuse me, one second, Mr. Paxton, were any of these documents submitted with your original application?
Uh, they were not.
Okay, 'cause I know, we do have a deed and some invoices.
Um, you know what, I will, uh, I will amend that answer. Yes, um, I would say, yes, the deed, these invoices were submitted.
Okay, 'cause they're, they're included in A2 then as well.
Okay, so.
So, A4 and A5 were? Included with A2.
So, opposed to doing overkill, then I will, uh, pass over my next couple, although I do have exhibits that were included in that packet, I'll provide you so that they can be circulated to the board if you'd like. Okay.
So, we should go back to A4 then? Is that correct?
Is there any more? Can we?
Yeah.
We'll just move it. A6 is your next number, sir?
A6 would be the certificate of occupancy.
And these are all new, new, like, uh, indicators?
Yeah, A6 was not part of the original.
Is there a date on that, sir?
Uh, the date of the certificate of occupancy, it's so old, it faded. Um, quite frankly, it, it's, i- it is a, looks blank, um.
A7?
A7, the photographs, um, two pages of, uh, photographs.
Of?
Of the exterior and interior of the building. A8 would be a bag with sample product of what's produced at the site.
Are you gonna read it?
No.
No written?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kowalko, you've been sworn, um, can you tell the board, are you the sole shareholder of PK Industries Incorporated?
Yes, I am.
And did you purchase the property?
Sir, can you speak into the microphone?
I'll post it to the mic.
Uh, can we, do we have the handheld?
Could I move it over?
Uh, we're gonna give you a handheld.
We're gonna. Yes, we'll show it, please.
You have to hold it really close, otherwise it can hear, but you can all, close it.
You wanna try this? Okay, don't wanna pull it out, why don't you hold this, and just hold it close.
Yeah, hold it right up to your mouth.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Kowalko, uh, you're the sole shareholder of PK Industries Incorporated?
Yes, I am.
Um, and, um, the property located at 452 Yellowbrook Squankam Road, Squankam Yellowbrook Road, um, that you purchased in the name of PK Industries Incorporated, is that correct?
Yes.
And you bought that in 1977, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And we've submitted a deed to the board with our original application, and is it your testimony that that is the deed to this property? I'll show you a copy of it.
I didn't understand your question.
This, this deed that we've submitted, it's, uh, from Thomas and Elizabeth Dolan to PK Industries Incorporated, and stated January 10, 1977. Is that the deed to the property that you know it?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, just make sure to hold that microphone close to your mouth, okay?
Okay.
And what kind of business do you operate at that site?
We make ceramic insulators for the medical industry, for the aircraft industry, and it's something that our biggest thing is the medical industry, the parts are so small, they'll fit underneath your fingernail, but there is two, there's a plus and minus circuit on there, and there's six different lines, and what happens when a patient has a problem, they go down through their mouth, and if they have cancer, they burn it away, or if they have a growth or something. Years ago, when we were working, helping this company develop this project, we used to have to keep a piece of liver in the freezer, because when they come down, I mean, I still have a generator that they left, and they would have, they wanted to see how it would cut the liver, so that always was there, and for them to see how the thing worked.
Okay, now, since you bought this property in 1977, is this the business that you've operated there since that time?
Uh, I don't know exactly when, but we've been making these parts for a good many years.
Since you bought that property in, in 1977?
And the other parts are all specialized ceramic insulators.
Okay. And does this bag, and I'm gonna jump out of order with regard to the exhibits, but this bag that's marked as A8, does this have the type of product you were just talking about?
Yeah. This little bag here.
Okay, so that's what you made.
You want me to take it out?
No, that's okay, but this would be what you made there.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Mr. Kowalko's testified that these are the products that he manufactures at the site, and I'll provide it to, uh, Ms. Rivano. Now, Mr. Kowalko, do you know what operated at that site prior to the time you owned it?
No, I don't.
Um, since you bought that building, have you expanded it?
No.
Uh, have you changed it in any ways?
No, nothing's been changed.
Okay. I'm gonna show you what's been marked as A6.
There we go.
And this is the, uh, for the certificate of occupancy, do you recognize that?
Oh, yeah, it was hanging on the wall for years.
Okay, this is the same one you've had on your wall since you bought the property?
Right.
And it's faded, and you can't really read it now, is that because it's been on your wall for 40 years?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Why, why you just asked that as far as certificate of, do you get regular fire inspections?
Uh, if, if I could respond to that, sir, the health, uh, Township Fire Bureau, uh, provided a response to our application, in which the bureau said that it, one has no objections to the variance request, they deemed to the variance, but to this application, and then it added a note, it said FYI, "The Fire Bureau has been, been performing an annual inspection at this business, beginning in January 1981 to the present, with no changes to the operation."
Okay.
And they, they, they called me today, they wanna come down next week, but they want the, the people to come and check the fire extinguishers first.
Correct.
So, they can make it one trip.
Okay.
And in furtherance of that, uh, bag of product that we sent around, these two brochures were included in our application pro, uh, packet, but I provide it for the board to review.
Me, too. The board should have them, I believe.
Yeah.
You're on the computers, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have a.
And Mr. Kowalko, I'm gonna show you, um, what's been marked as A7, which are two pages of photographs of the building. Can you tell the board whether or not these photographs accurately depict the way the building looks on the exterior and interior as of today?
Oh, yeah. Every day, they look the same. And we've never made any, the building is so solid and everything, we never had any problems. The only thing is, we had a new roof put on about a year ago.
I, I do have to say, I've been in the township almost 29 years, and that building hasn't changed in 29 years.
No.
And I used to farm the property right across the street from you, the, that was one of my hayfields.
Oh, really?
And it, it hasn't changed.
Is that where the house is?
Where they're building the new house? Yes, sir.
Mr. Kowalko, what you do, that, that business that you operate, um, are there a lot of those types of businesses in the United States?
There's maybe four or five.
Okay, so, one question that came up in the board's engineer report, um, raised the question of whether or not this building should be restricted to only manufacturing what you manufacture now, or whether or not this should just be allowed, if the board were to grant this, to continue with this, just a general manufacturing and assembly use? If the board were to restrict the use to what you do there, what your business is, would that make it more difficult for you to ultimately sell this property? If you understand my question?
I would have to think about that, I couldn't answer you right at all.
Okay, but since there's only a few of those types of businesses in the United States.
Oh, yeah, no, there's, there's products that we make that nobody else makes.
Okay.
Could I just mention one thing? It just went through my mind, is when we first moved down there, uh, a lot of the neighbors used to come over and say hello, how are you and all, and they were, there's a creek in the back of the building, and they used to come and pick up all the Indian artifacts that were there, because the Indians used to live on that creek, and it's, some of the stories, the way they, you know, the Indians were very nice to the people, and the people used to bring them food and everything else. But there hasn't been any there since we've been there, but before that, but the neighbors there, I mean, they're all passed away now, they all had some good stories to tell.
And it's your intention now, that you, you would, you've worked a good long time, and you'd like to retire and hopefully sell this property, correct?
Uh, yes, you know, I'd like to do that.
Okay. Um, and obviously, in order to be able to sell this property and, and in its current state as a, um, as a general manufacturing and assembly type building with the zone change, the zone changed in 1995, we're here asking for this certificate of non-conformity, um, and again, you've, you've operated this, this business continuously since 1977?
Oh, yeah, well, we originally came from Irvington and Newark, and it's something that, uh, my father had a machine shop, uh, basement of our house, and when I was five years old, I was working away. I mean, that was after the depression, and everybody had to work, and it's something that, uh, you know, eventually, we had so many customers, he had to move the business out in Irvington to a bigger building.
Okay.
And then after a while, we had to move to a bigger building, and that's when I decided to take thi- this part of the business and move down south, because I live in Tom's River, and it was a problem going up to Newark every day.
Okay. Um, I have no further questions for Mr. Kowalko at this time.
Mr. Howard?
So, if I could supplement this a little bit, um, it was just as the, the testimony's been given, I was present, I was presented with a perspective buyer who wanted to come in and continue the use. Looking through our files, as, uh, the applicant has demonstrated, there's been no change to this site. There's no files, there's no construction permits for work being done on the building, there's no site plan, there's no variances, because nothing has changed in how many years? So, it was one of these situations, I wish I could, you know, look at the evidence myself and declare it non-conforming, but that's not what the law says, so, um, to back up some of the testimony, this is the 1992 zoning map, the subject site is right here at the corner of Sutherland and Squankam Yellowbrook, the property's clearly zoned SED, Special Economic Development, and to jump to the 1995 zoning map, the same area right here is zoned AREE 2. Uh, it's been AREE ever since, so there's definitely a time when this was zoned industrial and SED, um, based on the evidence presented and the testimony given, uh, especially based on the Fire Bureau records, it is very clear that that use, um, the, the use of the, the property predated the change to the AREE 2 zoning.
By the way, I never walked to the end of the three acres of land. It was too far. We had an option to buy five acres of land there, and it's something that I said, well, I can't, you know, we don't need three, why don't we need five? So, you know, they, uh, they didn't sell us the other two. Matt? Or, hey, I, let me just throw this out. Okay, do, do we, the non-conformity is manufacturing, correct?
It sounds like there's a manufacturing, a light manufacturing and assembly use on the site.
Okay, uh, do you have a problem keeping it as a light manufacturing, assembly, you know?
Uh, no, just that if it was specific to this industry, it would be very difficult, but if it's just a light manufacturing, um, you know, I mean, that's, that's what he's looking for, if somebody wanted to do something in this building, and buy the building for the purpose of light manufacturing and assembly in general, yes, that's what we would.
Mike, can you provide any information as regards to how many employees work at the site, how many cars are parked there, uh, do people come to visit the site, or is everything just shipped to, you know, companies off-site? Um, I think the concern is, they grant, you know, a certificate of non-conformity for this use, and then, uh, you know, a more intensive manufacturing company comes in, and then where there wasn't an issue with fire access or traffic or something like that, now there is an issue, so, any details you can provide to the board to help them guide their decision, I think would be helpful.
Well, Mr. Mr. Kowalko, presently, is your business winding down?
Yes, it is.
But you're still in operation?
We're still in operation, there's a depression in this country, and it's a disgrace what's going on.
Okay, but I gotta ask you questions about this.
Hold the mic.
Yeah, you have to hold the microphone close to your mouth. Okay, just gotta ask you questions about this property. Right now, how many employees do you have?
We have four now.
Okay.
How many did he have?
Okay, hang on, one second. Yeah, you gotta hold the microphone close to your mouth. Okay, hang on one second. You got to hold the microphone close to your mouth. So you have four employees right now?
Right.
Okay. At your height, how many employees did you have?
Fourteen.
Okay. Do you... When you get supplies for your business, how are they brought to the business?
UPS.
And has that historically been the case?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. To ship your supplies, to ship your product, how do you do that?
UPS.
All right. And is that just on a case-by-case basis, or do you do mass shipping?
When the product is built, then they get it. Some days, we don't ship anything.
Okay.
Okay, so because there's a lot of time goes into some of these projects. So it's something we just can't take them off the shelf and ship them. We have things on the shelf, but, you know, it's like everything else. They always order something that you already have.
I'm not sure if that addresses the questions you have regarding the operation.
I think the concern becomes, understanding that this was an SED zone historically, it was changed many years ago to AREE two, which is one of our agricultural residential zones. And so while the nature of the manufacturing use at this location was benign enough, where UPS trucks coming in and out are not tractor-trailers coming in and out, and fourteen employees is not fifty-five employees. And so the concern would be, if the certificate of nonconformity were broad, there could be an issue in this location moving forward. I don't think it should be super-specific to exactly what he makes, because I think that's really pushing the envelope.
No.
But I do think, and I think, you know, we were just kind of talking about how to frame this, in that it would have to be consistent in, you know, the number of employees and the types of deliveries and those types of things, because, you know, realistically, now the balance of those properties has the potential to turn over into large-lot residential. And the town felt in the mid-nineties that this was more appropriate than industrial at this location. This use alone is totally benign. I don't, you know, I don't think, if he wasn't trying to sell the property, we would even be having this conversation. But I'm concerned about making it manufacturing and assembly globally, because that could open the door to some pretty significant, heavy industrial-type things that probably are not appropriate for this area of town.
And I would just respectfully submit that based on the size of the building, that the relatively small building, that in and of itself would restrict the number of employees and the intensity of the operation. And any future owner that would want to intensify that and potentially expand the building, add employees and whatnot, would be subject to board review as far as site plan approval. And certainly, the boards in the future would have the opportunity to put restrictions on the use in that respect. I can give you an example, though. There was a potential purchaser of the property who, because of this process, had lost interest. They wanted to come in and make a fishing-fly business, just having a small, you know, fishing pole, fishing rod, making, you know, things related to that with just a couple of employees. I think it would be that kind of light-type thing. And certainly, I respect your concerns, and they're well-founded. My only concern, again, would be hamstringing them to the point where they would almost not be able to sell the property, because there's no business out there for this anymore.
Well, that's why, that was why I had indicated that. I don't think it should be super-specific to exactly what he's manufacturing, because, like I said, I don't, you know, the testimony was, there's only four or five people that do this nationwide. That would be unfair to make it so super-specific. Like you said, it would be unsellable. But I don't want to open it up broad-brush, because I really think the zoning change in the mid-nineties, which, you know, as we have been here for many, many years, is now getting farther and farther in the past. So, you know, this area was identified as more appropriate for residential. So I just want to make sure that we don't...
Yes, sir.
We're not so broad that there is potential to, you know, create problems moving forward.
Mr. Massa?
What is the square footage of your facility?
Fifty by a hundred.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Can we put... Jennifer?
Yeah.
Can we put a restriction to the size of the building, so they can't expand?
Well, if they expand the building, it's expansion of a nonconformity use anyway. So they would have to come back here anyway. So it's really, it would really only impact a user of the existing facility. If the facility's expanded in any way, they're here for a use variance.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
But can... As far as the wording in any type of resolution, can't we restrict it to a similar business, not necessarily their manufacturing of products?
I think that's what we're getting at.
But to, you know, a light manufacturing industrial, not to exceed, you know, the capacity of the building itself now?
And I think that's what we're getting at. The general category of use of light manufacturing and assembly is what we're going for. It's all the little details that can't be an expansion. So the number of employees, the type of deliveries, even the hours of operation, if we could get some information on, that's what I'll be charged with looking at. And it's really a snapshot in time as to what this business is, what the certificate says. If the building expands, that's easy. The physical site expands. But if all of a sudden it's going to be twenty-five employees and weekend hours where there were none, then that'll be an expansion that brings them back.
Right.
So it's really in the little details now, going forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So if this site was conducive for manufacturing, right, and the country's moving in a STEM technology-type of manner, with modular manufacturing coming into play, with robotics, can't we limit it to something like that?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to, but we don't want to outgrow that building, you know.
And again, I would just, again, with all due respect, just request that it not be specified to a...
Right.
Specific type of manufacturing in the sense that it has to be regulated to medical. They don't just do medical here. Or that, and it's a point well-taken, but again, like I said, we had a potential buyer who wanted to make fishing reels. There are different things that are totally unrelated to this type of application, but would have been a light industrial assembly-type use.
Yes. Yes, sir, Mr. Massa. Are there any discharges? Is this property watered and sewered? Public water and sewer?
Do you have public...
Do you have public water and sewer at the property?
We have a well...
You have to use the microphone.
We have a well outside, and...
It's not a septic system?
Yeah, well, that's about it.
Septic.
Septic?
Yes.
Do you have any... Do you generate any waste from the, your operation?
Well, just the only waste we have is water from the bathroom and everything. But we have this pumped out. Once in a while, they come and they pump it out.
And that's the septic system?
Right.
But you don't have any industrial waste? Any byproduct of your operation is taken away by a private hauler and garbage?
No. No, we don't have this problem.
Counsel, can we get the hours of operation of the business as it currently is?
Currently, how... Each day of the week, how many days of the week are you open each week?
Five.
Monday through Friday?
Five days. We work from eight to four.
Eight in the morning till four in the afternoon, Monday through Friday?
Right.
Have you always historically had those hours?
Well, sometimes, you know, things are slow, we'll go down to four days a week instead of five.
Okay. Had you ever operated longer than the hours that you do now? You've always been five days, week eight to four?
Every while, you can't... I mean, I have an eye loop that I use all the time, and, you know, the measuring tools and everything else. And you could do that so long, and then you can't continue on.
Okay.
And my people, too. You know, they're very conscious of what they're doing, and we do it right. Because somebody out there, you're going to save their life, so you got to do the job the right way.
Okay, thank you.
So would you have an issue just keeping it a light industrial, you know, no major industrial manufacturing?
That would be...
And then kind of limit it to fourteen people or ten people, and then the hours, you know, of operations? Do you have an issue?
Chair, it might also be worthwhile exploring, putting a restriction on no visitors to the site for sales purposes. I don't know. Currently, is it all by, like, phone with existing clients, or do you actually have people that drop in?
No, we have nobody that drops in.
Okay, so if it's just...
And most of our customers are out of state.
Okay. So a lot of businesses now just operate by phone or, you know, by online ordering and stuff like that. So that might be something that the board should consider. Because that may impact the parking demand on the building. You know, it's currently functioning okay now. There's no issue noted from the town. But once you start inviting people to the site, you know, problems that didn't exist, people don't park in grass areas and stuff like that, so.
And again, we wouldn't know what any future potential party would have. And so I'm just trying, I'm trying not to hamstring them too greatly. It's a large site, it's three acres plus.
I know, but if they expand it, they're going to be back here anyway.
Right.
So, you know, they... What we're trying to do is get a, you know, if you do have a potential buyer, whenever they come to Matt to say, you know, what can I do, this kind of gives Matt a threshold to go by to what he could advise a buyer that they could do.
One other question. Was there any type of outdoor storage ever on the site or outdoor operations?
Mr. Kowalenko, did you ever have any outdoor operations on the site?
No.
And did you ever store any product or anything, byproducts outdoors?
No, we can't. The rain and everything would destroy everything.
Okay, so it's all self-contained in the building?
All safe and...
With everything we've heard, I think, you know, between having the manufacturing, light assembly use with that being a general category, really homing in on the scope, I think we have hours of operations set, Monday through Friday, normal business hours, eight to four, easily eight to five would be acceptable as normal business hours. The shipping delivery, UPS, fourteen employees, it's a fifty by a hundred building, there was no retail, no public on-site, no outdoor operations, no outdoor storage. I think that's more than I have most times going on for future tenants. So I'm pretty comfortable, if the board finds this favorably, that we can, you know, a new owner, we can evaluate fairly.
And certainly, I think that's fair. It's a fair reading of what's been going on. And we are fully cognizant that zone has changed, so we can't expand what we've been doing. So, yes, that'll be acceptable.
Okay. Cover you. Okay. Okay, any further from professionals?
No, sir.
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Mallon?
Yeah. I don't know if that's thought about this, but the problem is, when you get a new applicant come in, we always get a changeover. One of the first things we always look at is parking. I would think that if he gets a new tenant, he sells it, that new applicant would have to come out with some sort of layout for parking. Doesn't look like there's a lot of parking on the site, but we do have a provision for a minor site plan, which they can fall under, which wouldn't require you to come to the board. But I think, I just want you to be aware of what could happen. And I think that's something that any new tenant coming in is going to have, would have to probably do.
And certainly, I would hope that any new tenant would do their due diligence. Certainly, they would be advised of the proceedings here and provide a copy of the resolution, hopefully of approval. But certainly, they would, you know, be responsible for doing their own due diligence as well.
I just want you to understand, just because you get the use, and once he sells it, somebody comes in, they're still going to have to provide Matt with a parking layout, and they may have to go through some sort of a minor site plan, which we have instituted in the past, what, two years, Matt? Now that they don't have to actually do a formal application to the planning board or something.
Certainly, and they'd obviously have to abide by the township ordinance in any case. So, yes, certainly.
And that would be your discretion at that time?
The ordinance has provisions in it and requirements for that approval that they would have to meet.
Correct. So, okay, any further questions from the board? I have a motion to open to public.
Motion to open to public?
Motion by Mr. San Clemente.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there anyone in the public wish to come forward, ask questions, or make a comment? Come forward.
Sir, before you start the procedure before the board, is that everyone needs to speak towards a...
I do. Sure. My name is Pastor Dan Brindley. Would you like my personal address or the address of the church?
Church.
Okay. 462 Squankum Yellowbrook Road. So I'm the pastor of the church right next door to Pete's property. And I just want to say, Pete's been an incredible neighbor. We've been there for, I guess, I don't know, eleven, twelve years, something like that. And he's just been a gem. He's been a great guy. His property, his business, has not been any kind of an issue whatsoever. We're right next door. We would have known if it was a problem in the community. There's no issue whatsoever. Our only concern would be later on, perhaps after the property is sold, I think somebody mentioned, you know, heavy industrial use or something like that. We might have an issue like that. But other than that, we would have no problem at all. And I just wanted to speak to his reputation and the reputation of that company.
Yes, sir.
They're excellent.
Yes, sir. Now, whenever we were talking, that's why we were trying to get a framework and guidelines, so land use officer would know, you know, for a prospective buyer to come in and ask questions. We're limited to a light industrial, basically similar to what he's doing now, but it could change as far as manufacturing and industrial. You know, it could change, but it's going to basically stay at the same key that it is now. You know, that's what we're...
And I think that's...
That's why we're trying to get the resolution drawn.
And I think that's perfectly acceptable. The issue I would have is, we have a preschool there and, of course, other things. And if it just got out of control, it might be...
That's why we were trying to get guidelines.
No, Pete's been no problem. And if it's something like that, we have no issue whatsoever. It'd be fine. Okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is there a helicopter coming this year?
No.
You sure?
Is there anyone else in the audience wish to come forward, make a comment or question? See you, Nick. Can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. Merton?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. San Clemente. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there any further input from the professionals?
Nothing further.
Nothing further? Any questions or comments from the board?
You know, should the board consider this? I'd like to make sure in the language that it's light manufacturing, right? Could be high-tech manufacturing.
Yes.
Could be robotics or whatever else is going on in there. Obviously, this has been a manufacturing facility for a long, long time. And, you know, to lose it to residential, you know, there's three acres there. It's open space. It's really pristine, in my opinion. So I don't see any... Once you lose it, you never get it back, is what I'm saying.
Agree. Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Members of the board, what we have here is a manufacturing from a long time ago, over forty years. And now that the zoning has changed, that's what comes into question. But it's more of what's going to be coming forward, what's going to be, what could happen once this property is sold. And that's the big questions. I'm going to make a motion to approve this application with these following restrictions. Manufacturing will be light manufacturing and assembly. The hours will be Monday through Friday, eight to five. Maximum of fourteen employees. There'll be no visitors, no outside storage, and UPS and USPS shipping only.
Deliveries.
Shipping, excuse me, shipping and deliveries.
Well, FedEx, too.
Okay, and yeah, we'll put FedEx, FedEx also.
If I could, yeah, there are, sometimes there's private haulers, we see it now, that aren't named any of those specific ones, but they're just a small truck.
It's a UPS-sized truck?
UPS-sized truck.
It doesn't have to be, it could be a box truck, but that's comparable in size to a UPS truck.
I can only say, I got my dog food delivery today, and it was... I can only say I got my dog food delivery today, and it was none of the major carriers, but it was the same-sized truck.
Okay, we'll say, I'll say, small, third-party delivery and shipment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that good?
That covered it?
Yep. Okay, you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Orozco. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Merton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Troply, you have your resolution. Good.
He's taking good notes.
Okay, if there's... Is there any other business before the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you. Good luck. Good luck with the property. Is there any other business before the board? C and N, can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Moretti?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Merton. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Welcome to the new year, and thank you, everybody.